My name's Anthony Teneral. I officially call this meeting to order. I will remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded. And we will start with introductions to my left.
Evan Cody.
We're Bushman.
Becky Stanton.
Joe Messina, business administrator.
Mike Flanagan, superintendent.
Danielle Athanas.
Ryan McMahon.
Stacy Guido.
Rob Mullin.
If you'd all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the April seventh tribe board. The April eighth school committee minutes, the April eighth executive session minutes. Do I need to make any of those out of order?
I just want to point out the executive session minutes not to be released at this time.
At this time.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries.
Thank you. Citizens time?
None at this time, Mr. Chair.
Personnel?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to announce two new hires for the district. Ms. Kaylee Bluen will be hired as a TMS Bridges teacher, replace Ms. Craig, who is retiring. And Stephen Luckey will be joining us as a physical education teacher at TES. We also have a resignation from Victoria Ryder, TES paraprofessional. And we have a request from attorney Lee from Nicole Bernard, who is a middle school, high school, school psychologist.
Excellent, thank you. Evan, share the success.
Thank you. TES is excited for the annual science expo, art show, and pasta dinner event this Thursday. A special thank you to Mrs. Gremer and Mrs. Morocco for supporting our scientists on their projects. And thank you to Mrs. Anderson for curating a piece of artwork for every student at TES. We look forward to seeing you there. This week, TES kicks off its trimester three after-school enrichment offerings, which include seasonal crafting, basketball, track, and playdates, as well as fine motor activities for our youngest learners. At TMS, math MCAS is next on the agenda for all three grades. First up next week is eighth grade. The MEGG one act play competition is in Lawrence this weekend. Good luck to Mrs. Leahy and the cast. The eighth grade students returned from DC after having a great time. The students were excellent on the trip. Finally, the band is competing in the Great East Festival this Friday. As for THS, they'll be joining us today, and any of your planning is underway. We look forward to celebrating the cost of twenty twenty five.
Excellent, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to take agenda item nine A out of order.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries.
So, Mr. Chair, one of the things I'd like to do is bring students in front of the committee to kind of provide an update as to what's going on in the school. Today, we're joined by the Mr. Ogden and the freshman class officers, so I will turn it over to them at this point.
Yeah, so thank you for having us tonight. As you know, one of the big goals of the district this year is the transition plan. So I thought a great way to hear how that transition went from eighth grade to the high school would be to hear from the freshman class. So if we're gonna start on the end, Emma can introduce herself, and we'll work down, and then they'll take over from there.
I'm Emma Lacrosse.
I'm Kendall Sullivan.
I'm Lauren.
I'm Brett Raguar.
So, one of the, you know, obvious things we have at THS would be our academics, which our academics kind of provide a lot of leniency and personalized compared to the middle school, once you get to high school. So we have a lot of electives, which you can choose between your different classes based on your personal interests or needs. We have class levels, which are made to fit your academic needs as comfortably as possible. And then for our art classes, art is a graduation requirement, and we have a lot of different forms of art for THS.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have a variety, especially for academics, so it like fits everybody's needs and interests, so they can further their careers in the future.
Ways you can get involved, or there are clubs, there are athletics, and there's especially theater is a big one in our school. For athletics, we offer many athletics for both boys and girls. And sometimes they combine, like in cross-country and in track, they combine together. But most of the time, they're separate, and I know a ton of people that participate full year round, or just like what they're interested in. And for clubs, a ton of people, even that do sports, do clubs as like an extra curricular. And like something they're interested in, or something they want to try to figure out, like it's helpful for experiencing something new. And we have plenty of clubs for multiple people to join.
Some of the biggest differences from TMS was more independence, so I'm being able to choose what classes I want to take specifically. And so I can focus more on what I want to do and like I want to pursue. I put more time into band and music because I have a big interest in that. So I'm able to do more classes here at THS for music like every day instead of every other day. And then also, the WIN schedule helps me meet with teachers every day that I need to, that I need to focus on classes for. And I'm also able to schedule wins every day so I can pick out the classes I want.
Yeah, I think WIN is definitely a big thing that's helped me. I think that when I was in the middle school, it was a lot harder for me to like finish my work. Like connecting with teachers through WIN, I think is a very good opportunity for students to get ahead of their schoolwork and get help if they need it. So I think it's a really good use of the time.
Yeah, something else to add on for WIN is for me, like I have a schedule, so I go to Miss Times Monday through Wednesday, and then Mr. Latin on Thursday. And that's helpful for me because it's like, it's a classroom, they're both classrooms where there are teachers that I like. And like, they're both quiet, and I get to do my work. But I could also, those are both classes where I can also go and ask other teachers questions, which really helps because I know in like the middle school, at one point in eighth grade, we had to stay in that classroom, like we weren't allowed to move around or anything like that. And like today, I've had to go to Mr. Redmond's to finish a project, and that's been helpful.
So some of our favorite things about THS, we obviously have homecoming week, which is just a really fun week that brings in a lot of like student involvement, such as like making the class banner and the class wall, where there's a lot of like art students that really like to come in. And you can see on one of the pictures, our class banner. And it just took a lot of like time, and it has a lot of really good detail and shows out like all the really good art students in our grade. It gives us like a lot of variety to have more periods since we have more classes, but we can choose what classes we want, like the electives that we can choose. And another thing, having a small school, there are some downsides, but really, it's like, it's really easy to access, even though we have a, we have a small grade, about eighty people. So it's, it's not bad, since we can all get around each, around pretty well.
If I could change one thing, I'd do more outdoor learning spaces, because I like learning outside. It's better, like I focus better, and it's more relaxing for me. And then also the lunch options, the lunches right now, they're all right, but I think that we just need some better variety, like maybe switch something up every other week. And additional electives for like more business-focused classes, or like more classes that are adjusted, like for recent, like recent careers that are up and coming.
Yeah, for me, like picking electives for next year was a little tough, because there wasn't much I was interested in. So I think more electives, or like switching some out would help, especially because I know a ton of people don't take like certain ones. Because it's just not something that most people are interested in.
I think for the outdoor learning, I personally, I get headaches when I'm in the school. When I go outside for lunch, it's kind of like gives me that energy boost to keep going towards the day. So I feel like if we were to learn outside, it would kind of keep us more focused, like Brett was saying.
So with the next three years up and coming, we're mainly looking forward to, you know, achieving our goals for graduation, like, you know, finding our colleges, finding out what interests we have, and maybe things that we don't like as much, and then finding out, you know, career, exploring career options, stuff like that. And since we are a bit of a smaller community, we're really able to build bonds with a lot of the students at THS, especially through clubs, classes, athletics, stuff like that, and even with teachers too. And then getting involved and giving back to the community is another thing that is really big, like for National Honor Society, you have to do twenty hours of volunteer, twenty volunteer hours. And that's another thing that just like, you know, helps give back to the community, stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm looking to, like, I'm looking forward for what the high school experience will give me throughout like growing up and kind of learning new things about other people, learning what I like, what I don't like, especially before going to college, because once you're in college, it's more like you're on your own, you're more independent than you are right now.
And I think so far, high schools already helped with that.
I'm looking forward to future homecomings, because I got a lot of participation, like helping out in the grade, and there's a lot of collaboration. And I really enjoyed playing the games and having fun with helping out people, like building the banner, the wall, and helping design a video.
Yeah, I agree with the homecoming stuff. It was really fun, just being involved with the school and helping out. Also like talking to newer people, even though we have like a small grade, there's some people that I don't talk to, and I realize that I haven't really, no, I don't really know that many people that well. And I've made new friends with that.
That's all they have, questions?
Well, thank you very much for coming out tonight and presenting to us. We, this is our favorite time of the year when you guys all come out. So I think you'll hear that from everybody. Mr. McMahon always has a stupid question or two to ask. So we'll go to him first.
What's your favorite ice cream flavor? So you talked about some of your favorite things. What are some of your least favorite things about the high school? We can ask Mr. Ogden to step out if you want.
One of the things with it being a small community is although it's a lot easier to make connections, it's a lot easier for things to go wrong with stuff like that. So kind of like, things can, with certain people, things can kind of like spread around, I guess, like rumors and stuff like that, which isn't always the best, but it's definitely like a learning experience and still provides like lessons that you need for everyday life.
I can't really think of anything off the top of my head.
Having to write notes.
Yeah, a lot of notes, a lot.
Just, well, I think that's just for me, like personally, they don't work as well. I have like a different system in my head, so writing all of those notes, especially for bio, it just is a pain.
Yeah, I think people, a lot of people have different learning styles, so just kind of soothing the needs of everybody's different learning needs.
I think that since we're like a smaller school, there's not going to be as many specific classes for like, if you want a specific like career path. So there's gonna be a lot broader classes to suit your needs, but if you're trying to focus on a specific class that you want to take, there might not, might not have that option, because it's a smaller school.
I love everything about this school. Nice. If you could say one thing to an incoming freshman, what would it be?
That Tingsboro has like, it can build your, like whatever you want to do, you can still get the education here. Like you don't need to go to a trade school. I mean, if you want to, that's definitely an option, but you can still have the same education here and do whatever you want to do without going to a trade school or any of that stuff. Yeah, I think it offers, Tingsboro offers pretty much the same thing as every other school does, if not more. When I was thinking about going to another school, I thought it was really cool that, like based on what you're interested in, field trips are available. And like connecting with teachers, being able to see the possibilities of where you could go, I thought was pretty cool.
I would say probably get involved. There's a lot of different, you know, things that you can do, which will definitely help with college applications. And also pay attention to your classes, because freshman year is when you get to, you know, like build your GPA, and that's your starting point. So I'd say like, pay attention to your classes and don't, I would say try, like, there's some people who maybe don't try, because either they don't want to, they wake up too early, they're tired, all this stuff. But I would say, you know, put in your best effort.
I would say like, you might like know who your friends are, or like you might be scared of the upperclassmen, but just don't be. You have to have an open mind. Like for me, I made so many new friends, upperclassmen and people that were in my class already. And the upperclassmen are really helpful and nice, so just like, you can go for them to ask questions. I've done that like twice today already.
Some of the connections you get here, like you won't find anywhere else, and it's a very unique experience that has a lot of great opportunities. But there's also some, there's a lot of great classes that like you can't, like that you need to get, that you can't get, sorry, that you can't get anywhere else that you can find here. Like there's lots of music classes, there's lots of art classes, there's like, there's a lot of variety.
I would, I would say don't take too much stress on like all the work that you have, because if you do, you're just gonna start tearing yourself apart, and it's not fun when that happens.
Hey, I think you guys did a wonderful job of hugging all the time and opening up to everyone else.
I just want to say you guys did a really great job. I think that it can be hard to come in here and talk with the, knowing that you're on camera and talking in front of adults. But you all did a really great job. You were all easy to hear. Sometimes people come in and they're really quiet talkers, and we can't hear them. You guys did great. And I appreciate that you were open about your, your own perspectives, because that's really helpful to us, and it's good for us to hear what you really think, so thank you.
Mr. Mullin, you're good.
I'll just echo what they've said. Great job tonight. It's, it's being on this committee for as long as a couple of us have, we've seen so many different groups of kids come through, and it just seems that every year, you guys get better and better. So great job. Don't ever be afraid of us. We're not, we're not, because hopefully you get to come back next year and do it again, so. But one of the things that Mr. Ryan had asked, what was your least favorite bit? And you touched on it a little bit about, on some of the things. And what you would say to the incoming freshman class last, for next year. I'm actually interested in hearing, how is it becoming the youngest kids in the school again? Even though it's just a small walkover to this building, what was the experience from going to being the oldest kids in the building to the youngest kids?
I think I had like, I had the mindset of like, like they're all gonna like pick on me, like none of them's gonna talk to me. But once like I kind of opened my mind up and like had an open mind for everybody around me, it feels the same. I feel like, like I'm friends with some of the seniors. I feel like we're all just kind of the same age, especially because most people have like the same maturity level.
Yeah, especially with a small school, you kind of, coming from the middle school, I kind of already knew everybody. But yeah, it was just really easy to get to know people. No one's mean, so that's good.
It's a little scary at first, but I'm one of those people that is scared of the upperclassmen. But so it was definitely a little scary at first, but once I got here, it was, you know, it was different, but it was something that was a positive change, and I really enjoyed the changes from the middle school to the high school.
I realized like I have a lot to learn, like there's still stuff that I need to focus on and I need to get better at. But I found out that like I can get help from older people, like upperclassmen, and it's been a lot easier adjusting.
I honestly just agree with everyone else.
I'm glad to hear the upperclassmen have been so much help. That's really good to hear, because that can be a scary transition.
During homecoming, we got the go-home freshman chant, like every year. Yeah, but we actually fought back this time. We had a poster that said, just graduate already, so.
I think that sounded about twenty years ago. So at least, yes. Great, thank you very much.
So every group that comes through here, every, every student talks about lunch in some capacity. It's always a topic, and I know it's near and dear to Mr. Messina's heart. The elementary school students last year really gave us an earful. So you guys, it came up in your one thing that you would change. So I think everybody has a memory of their high school lunch. Like for me, like turkey slap day, like teachers would let us line up at the door before we ran to the cafeteria to get in line. But then there was also the day it would be like, you know what, we're gonna take a minute. So fun question on the ice cream vein. What's your favorite lunch for the positive feedback? But then on the flip side, what's one lunch that you would, or like maybe add in?
Well, there, I think a few weeks ago, we had the assayables come in. There was like a guy that was doing it for us, and I think that a lot of people loved that. I don't really have school lunch, so I could not tell you.
I also don't eat school lunch, but anytime there's mozzarella sticks, I'll get those.
Yeah, it's a solid option.
I'm sorry. I would say, I really like the mac and cheese, but it's a little too cold sometimes, like it's not actually warm.
Yeah, especially after getting third lunch. It's like you get like the scraps.
I had to go to third lunch today, because I had a test, and there was no food left, so.
My favorite lunch is the chicken. And then my, if I were to get rid of one, I'd probably get rid of the corn dog or the chili. I don't really, I don't like those.
I usually just bring my own lunch, but if I ever want anything, I'll just buy the dollar cookies.
It's sustainable for everybody.
If Mr. Messina could get like a Starbucks Chipotle and chicken. Well, Jari would be able to be pretty happy.
Why do you squatch every day?
Would you have the lunch folks coming to the next school committee meeting?
Good timing. Good time to have a conversation about that, yes.
I would say one thing with school lunch that like people do get annoyed about is that like the second the last person in line comes out of line, they like immediately close up, and you can't really, like you can't go back and get a cookie. And like a lot of people like, don't know if they want one, don't know if they'll be full or not, so a lot of people complain about that, but that would be it.
You guys mentioned clubs. Are you involved in any of the clubs, and what clubs are there? I do robotics club. I help out with fundraising, and I just share my ideas.
So this year, I did DECA. A lot of people recommended it to me, like a lot of upperclassmen. And I found it like a really interesting experience, like a really good experience for me, as it like, a lot of my leadership qualities, like they got way better, and like my communication skills too. I actually made it to states, but I didn't make it to internationals, but we actually did have three, three juniors make it to internationals this year. It was really good for the school.
I also did DECA this year, which I enjoyed a lot. I'm super interested in the business field, I would say, and it was, it was amazing to learn.
you know, amazing, so that's really how clubs can help you build bonds and grow as a person with like learning stuff.
I love hearing you talk about a business club and how it's cool, like. That's really great, and I also loved the feedback about um, Mr. Richall. We hear a lot of great things about him.
Yeah, he's super great.
Yeah, well, I thank you guys, I really appreciate the openness that you have with us. I'd like to ask you a bit, on the transition from the middle school to the high school, are there any things that you could see that you'd like to see improved on?
Like the transition to the high school?
Yeah.
I think um, like course selection was a bit overwhelming for me, cause like I didn't really know what I was doing. And um, some of like the um, terms, like I didn't really know how to like select my classes. But um, s- but there was also like a helpful um, orientation at the start of the year, so that helped me get adjusted to the high school.
Uh, I would also probably say the um, class selections, because I thi- so this year, we met with um, our counselor to go, like go through what we picked, what, like what we want, make sure we're getting all the credits. And last year, like I got help from my brother, cause he's a senior right now, but I had no idea what he was talking about and there wasn't really anybody to help me, cause like the eighth grade teachers didn't really know much about it either. So that was like, I was just so confused and did not understand when I got mine, like what I was picking.
I actually did it wrong the first time, but I fixed it.
It's nice to hear about the different clubs, when my kids were in high school, they were in the box also and we went to a number of competitions, uh, as well as my son did there. Uh, the other question I had is I'm curious on the social media elective, what kind of courses are you looking for?
Um, so me and Emma actually, for DT Hockey, we ran the social media account um, for Instagram and Facebook and um, since social media and computers is kind of like an upcoming thing and that's gonna be a part of the future, um, a lot of careers can come out of that and I think that adding an elective like that would be very beneficial. Um, I know that uh, Ms. Richardson, Richardson, we were talking about it, um, I think she'd be open to doing something like that, but, yeah.
Yeah, my daughter was an English major, but uh, she does social media for movies out in Los Angeles.
Yeah, I love it, it's so fun.
And it's a tough job, but she loves it. And she definitely got a strong background in her, yeah, T H S.
It's pretty big right now too, it's, it's an important aspect now. More than it was like a couple of years back.
Yeah, I know when, like, this is gonna be like years from now, but when I am ready to do my college, um, like scheduling or whatever, um, I'm definitely gonna put like all the social media um, accounts I've ran, because it's definitely gonna be something that can um, build my resume, so, yeah, I think that's really important.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, actually Bert stole my question, cause I was, I was gonna ask, uh, but that was great feedback too. So I'm sure Dr. Flanagan, Mr. Ogden will take all that too.
Yeah, I think it's timely feedback, I think, you know, it's still April right now, so we can talk with our counselors here at the high school and say, how can we smooth this transition from grade eight to grade nine in terms of course selection and making it clear so that you aren't confused or relying on my older brother or whatever, uh, to make sure they're taking the right classes and they know what's uh, uh, coming ahead of them, so. Um, great, great presentation and, and great insight, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you guys for coming out.
Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ogden, for hanging out.
You guys can hang out the rest of the meeting if you want. It's not rude to say no.
All right, thank you guys again.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back to our regular scheduled meeting, uh, subcommittee updates, we did have a superintendent um, evaluation meeting this evening, the superintendent subcommittee, and uh, we will be updating you all in two weeks. We do have um, his, the, the timeline set up, which we'll discuss, and uh, we'll go from there. MSBA update.
All right, Mr. Chair, we will jump into the slide deck at this point, just a reminder about upcoming meetings, next week is town meeting at seven o'clock at the elementary school. Uh, the following week, we have our regularly scheduled school committee meeting on the thirteenth and then the election day on the twentieth, so we have one meeting in May, it'll be Evan's last meeting, we'll actually meet Evan's replacement uh, at that meeting as well, or successor, I should say, not replacement, um, and we'll go from there. Uh, next slide, MSBA update, right now, uh, there's, there's a ton of work going, uh, going on on the outsides. The seat walls and the caps and the outdoor learning spaces are, are in place in most areas. Um, they're working right now on grading levels and sidewalk prep and getting ready for all that, so that next Monday, when the concrete is on site, they're actually gonna start pouring the pathways and the walkways for all the outside uh, areas. Woodlook ceilings are, are finished in the main corridor, I have a picture of that that I'll share with you. Right now, they're really buttoning up that, they're really the heart of the school, that big curtain wall, the stairwell, the, the seating on the stairwell, tying up loose ends in the cafeteria with paint, the woodlook soft is at the bottom. So it's a lot of, a lot of ongoing work in that area. I would pretty much say though, main office area, classroom wings and the central office area are pretty much complete, right now it's all punch list work. So JCJ goes in first with the punch list, then Fontaine, and then JCJ goes back to it with the check off to say that it is complete. Once they do that, they'll do a final clean and really it's, we're having conversations about prepping for FFNE. Furniture, fixtures and equipment arrive June second. And June second will begin to put desks in place and things like that, so it's, it's really an exciting time right now, but there's a lot of detail work that's happening. Um, June ninth, the move as we get to that, June ninth, the bins arrive to the middle school and our teachers literally have seven days to pack up whatever they want. We'll stick labels on them, we'll get them to a central area in the middle school, and then school ends on June sixteenth, Wednesday, June eighteenth, no one will be back in that school. There'll be a fence around it and abatement will begin and demo will begin. So really, once our teachers walk out on the sixteenth, it's, it's take a picture, cause you're not gonna see it again. Um, so it's, it's an exciting time. Uh, and June nineteenth, they'll actually move the bins into the new middle school and begin demos, so, so that's about that. One of the big conversations we've had, and, and this was a little point of contention last year, but we worked everything out, what is parking, parking and traffic flow for next year. Um, this year, we weren't heavily impacted, because we still had the middle school drop-off lot for parents. We don't have that next year, that's all fencing, that's gone. So at least from August to November, the parking in the, in the road where you see on this map, that's all we have. We don't have the additional middle school loop. So I met with uh, Mr. Meringer and Mr. Ogden and uh, SR Augustusson, had conversations about what are we gonna do for parking and what are we gonna do for traffic flow in and out of school? So we determined next year, based on the number of spaces that we're gonna require, these will be the designated parking areas, you can see the red will be staff parking, purple will be student parking. Uh, the blue will be the morning drop-off, it'll be buses and parents going through that same drop-off loop. Um, the drop-off in the morning literally is ten minutes for buses. It's seven oh three to seven thirteen and that's it. So parents can come before that, they can come in between buses or at the end of it, and we'll have all hands on deck out there for the drop-off. Um, so that's what that's gonna look like. You go to the next slide, the afternoon traffic. The reason we designated those parking spots the way they were is because high school kids get out here right at the end of the day, so we wanted to provide them an op- opportunity to get out potentially before the buses or after the buses all flow out of the parking lot. The orange arrows you see here, that will be the middle school lineup at the end of the day for parents who are gonna pick up their kids. Uh, we will encourage high school parents to get in that lineup as well, but that'll be the lineup right there, so they'll use the entrance, I would say, to Norris Road for the exit and the buses and students will use the other exit. Um, in conversations with, as I said, with both principals and the SRO, um, it's gonna be all hands on deck, but really, much like this year, after a week, people get it. So we just have to be really vigilant to make sure we all understand how it's gonna flow out of here and we'll go from there. Um, but the reason we chose the orange lineup there on the parents is because that is all staff parking. We don't want parents lining up where kids are backing out. So uh, staff has to be here till fifteen minutes be af- after the bell, so that seemed to make the most sense. So those are the traffic patterns, we'll talk to the students about that, we'll talk to the uh, the staff about that. In terms of limiting parking spaces, uh, we don't believe that we need to do that, given the, the numbers that we had this past November versus what we project for uh, available slots for the beginning of the school year. So that's the parking pattern. I can answer any questions on that, if anyone has any questions about that. No?
When will the new parking lot be available? Like the new middle school parking?
Yeah, so hopefully by the end of November.
Okay.
And I, and that's what also makes a lot of this work is before the snow flies, because we don't have snowbanks and things like that. We are gonna have fifteen to twenty of our s- high school staff park out back on the, on the baseball field, um, so that we can accommodate all the student requests for parking passes. Uh, that would be a problem if it's not done by November.
Yeah, it would be, yeah.
So we have to make sure they're done by November.
First row, um, where the um, handicap spots are.
Yep.
Are you gonna keep the jersey barriers there?
Yes.
Closest to the school, so the people parking there will have to come back out and enter the area where the middle school.
The first two, just like we have now, the first two, we're gonna keep the barriers there. Yep, yep. So here are some of the interior finishes, again, you can just see that, you can see the papers down in the middle of the hallway, that's just for uh, for move purposes to protect the floors, but the hallways are done, it, it, it looks amazing and the, the paint and the finish work looks great. The wood look soften on the main entry is, is phenomenal, it's impressive, uh, it looks incredible. Next slide, exterior seat walls, you can see those going into place, those are the outdoor classrooms. Picture on the left is a classroom neighborhood on the internal V of the school, and the picture on the right is the seat wall under the overhang right out here, that you can see from the front, uh, walkway of the high school. So uh, those are all in place and, and really there's a, a ton of grading that has to go on uh, before that they can uh, pour the concrete, but they're, they're out there working hard every day, so it's exciting to see these spaces and uh, the, the, the seat wall outside the cafeteria looks great and uh, it's really coming together, it's, it's spectacular.
Dr. Flanagan, for those outdoor classroom spaces, have you, I, I'm getting ahead of ours, myself here, but have you started thinking on like how the classrooms book those, because they won't be a standing classroom? Is it like reserving a conference room almost, or?
So we have four outdoor spaces, so the thought would be each team gets one and the specialists get one and they work it out at their weekly team meetings, um, between themselves. Um, you know, we also have, we're also gonna have the media center, we're also gonna have all those spaces where kids can congregate in the classroom neighborhoods as well. So I feel like we have a ton of space for kids to kinda get out, uh, and, and enjoy some flexible seating and collaboration, so um, I can, I think we'll kinda leave it to them. Uh, but it's a good question.
Well, and I, the only reason I was asking that is, we had high school students here talking about learning outside and, you know, especially this, the second picture here, it's, it's very close to the high school, is it something the high school could utilize?
Yeah, it absolutely is, I mean, if you go back to when we had Tiger Plaza out here, I mean, it was a fight between the middle school and high school to, to get out there, whoever got there first had it, so uh, we could certainly come up with that um, that kids could share that spot as well, absolutely. So that's all we have for the MSBA update, uh, as we know, Mr. uh, Mr. Woodlock is not here, he's at a national conference presenting in Chicago right now. Uh, but to, to move on to nine B, Mr. Chair, super- superintendent's evaluation timeline. This is the standard timeline we've used for the past couple of years, like was modified like two years ago. Uh, and the goal was to uh, ensure that people who are on the committee are having input prior to election day.
Yes, so, May first, you'll receive the link from Mr. Piper. Um, Bert, you haven't done this yet, correct?
Been a number of years.
In this way, no, okay. It's so much easier than the way we used to do it, to be honest with you. Uh, thank you to Mr. McMahon and Mr. Piper. Uh, they didn't like my twelve hundred pieces of paper. Did you, have you done, you, you didn't either, so this is your first one too, okay, yeah. Um, so you'll get a link from Mr. Piper? And it, it's kinda self-explanatory, I guess, in a lot of ways. Um, but if you have any questions at all, call me and, and we'll walk through it. So from the first to the ninth, I ask you to prepare your evaluations and then get them back to us. Um, the school committee, uh, will complete it on the ninth and then we're gonna actually meet the subcommittee on the twelfth. Um, to go over them, I'll put the final together and then we'll meet again on the thirteenth to discuss that with Dr. Flanagan. And then we'll let you guys know exactly what the final was on everything, so. Uh, but all I ask is that you have them back to me by the ninth, so. All right, um.
You want to take a motion on that, just to formally approve the timeline?
So moved.
Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries. Thank you, everyone. Valley Corroborative Board of Directors appointment. For those of you who may not know, Dr. Flanagan is on the Board of Directors for Valley Corroborative. And the Board of Directors, correct me if I'm wrong, are the superintendents of all the districts that feed kids to Valley Corroborative.
Correct, there are nine of us.
Yes, so every year, um, we appoint Dr. Flanagan to be, um, and you were the chair for a year or two, I don't know.
No, I'm not the chair, I'm currently on VSA.
Um, so I will take a motion to appoint Dr. Flanagan to the Board of Directors for the Valley Corroborative School.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, okay. And that's another thing that, um, just to add to that, that a lot of people don't know, uh, especially probably in our community, um, but even members of, I'm sure our school district that Dr. Flanagan is on the Board of Directors of Valley Corroborative and it is time-consuming. Um, but he does it as, as part of his job here too, which I think helped us with uh, Valley Corroborative and we have a great relationship with them leasing our building.
Certainly helps with our lease.
Yes, and they uh, uh, they help us and we appreciate them very much. Twenty-year power purchase agreement, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so as we get closer to the middle school being done, um, once the school committee takes ownership of the building, we can proceed with our planned solar project. So that comes along with a host of documents for the um, for the chair. But uh, just from a financial view, this slide will just show you the planned savings over a twenty-year period is slightly over six hundred thousand dollars. And the reason we get savings uh, from these projects are twofold. First of which is we lock into a rate for the electricity, um, that we're buying from the solar panels for the full twenty years. There's no cost of living adjustments at all during the twenty years. The second is because they are on a building, we are not paying National Grid to deliver those um, kilowatt hours to our building. So we save on the delivery fee as well as having a fixed rate. So the current plan is a, based upon a forty-eight percent um, of the energy, electricity from, for the building will come off of the solar panels. And this is the initial design. Select Energy, who is our provider on, on these panels, uh, has worked with both JCJ and Fontaine during the design process to maximize what we have on the roof up there. So it's, it's been a great partnership that they've been involved, um, and it's, was strictly waiting for the school committee to have the building before we could proceed with the project. So once that starts, uh, pending a positive uh, vote tonight, uh, Select can come in and start working on getting those. Again, not exactly sure if we can get it done this summer. Um, it always comes with having to buy the panels and get them on site. You know, when we did the high school, we shot for the summer, but it, it sort of bled into uh, middle of August um, on this building, but um, their work was very quiet. It's not something that will be very disruptive and I think the kids on this campus have lived through plenty of disruption for the last couple of years. Um, nothing that they'll even recognize compared to what they've already been through. So the action tonight would be um, the school committee to approve the chair to um, enter into the twenty-year pricing agreement. We are fixed at ten point six nine cents for this twenty-year period. Um, I think that's a pretty productive rate, because currently we're paying eleven percent, eleven cents just for uh, supply itself and the prices I'm getting going forward is in the twelve cent range right in the market right now. So I think being locked in for twenty years at, at a little over ten cents is um, is pretty decent. As part of that authorization for the chair, there are a number of agreements besides the uh, power purchasing agreement. There's some uh, signatures needed regarding um, what Select does is they're essentially leasing our roof um, to provide these uh, um, to provide these, uh, panels onto it. Um, so there's about four documents for the chair to sign regarding that. So that would be the motion tonight.
And if I could, just a couple of things I wanted to add to that, Mr. Messina is, we did get permission to, uh, enter into a twenty year agreement at town meeting at the last, when we got the solar panels for this building.
Correct.
So, um, so that was previously done. Do we know how much we have saved with this building?
Yes, so in your drive, if anybody really wants to crunch some numbers, um, I do a monthly comparison to the Select Energy bill, um, off the, off the solar panels compared to the current month's National Grid bill. And we can see a, a month by month savings as well as what percent of usage is coming off of the solar panels for the high school. Where a little over, um, August of twenty nineteen is when they came in. So a little bit over five, five years of having them on the roof. And we've saved roughly two hundred and forty-three thousand.
Wow.
From having them on here.
So in a twenty year lease, we'd be about ten thousand, or close to what we, or, I said ten thousand? A hundred thousand? I don't know what I'm talking about.
This, this, uh, this grid is actually sized a little bit larger, um, for the use of the building. So we are in that, you know, as you, as you, you know, if you look at five year plans.
Yeah.
Um, you know, take the twenty years, put it into five, you know, four chunks of five, you could essentially say, you know, we're close to, you know, almost a million. And I think the original projection had us in the eight to nine hundred thousand for a projection.
So we're right on. All right, and this also helped us with MSBA and our.
Our lead certification green initiative, there's reimbursement for that, yes, as well.
Reimbursement for that too, so. We went all the way around.
Yep.
So at this time, I'll seek a motion to approve the twenty year power purchase agreement for the Tinsboro Middle School Solar Project.
So moved.
Second, any further discussion?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries. And I will be in tomorrow to, uh, get that done.
Okay, excellent.
All right, finance, we're gonna stay right with you, Mr. Messina.
Oh, uh, just a reminder, end of year dates on the, on the screen and you received a letter today. If you plan on making it, if you don't mind responding, uh, to RSVP to Beth Corvus, the high school, for those three high school events, um, they obviously like to put away some, uh, reserved seating for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for finance, um, for signing of bills, there were nine bill warrants presented to the committee. I do have them all back approved. As always, the list of warrant numbers, accounts and amounts are in the drive. For signing of payroll, since we last, uh, talked about payroll, there were two payroll dates, the April seventh and April twenty first dates. Again, in the drive are the warrant number, accounts and amounts. Also in your drive is the school committee financial package for the month of March. Um, that includes your current budget at the end of April, the balances of your revolving accounts as well as the balances of the student accounts. And I will leave the enrollment to the chair.
All right, enrollment, Tinsboro Elementary School, seven hundred and thirty-one, the middle school, four oh two, high school, four eleven, added district twenty-three, for a total of one thousand five hundred and sixty-seven.
That's it.
Perfect, thank you. School discussion.
All right, it's my second to last meeting, um, do we know who my successor is gonna be yet?
I do not.
Nobody know?
Mr. Ogden.
Okay, I'll talk to him tomorrow, I guess. Um, other than that, no.
All right, thank you.
Just wanna thank, uh, Mr. Ogden and the high school freshmen, they did a great presentation and look forward to all the stuff coming up before graduation.
Echo the same about the, uh, student presentations and I believe we have three students in Florida right now that competed today in DECA, so looking forward to hear how they did.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you to the freshman class for coming out, um, another wonderful presentation. Um, I also wanna thank the middle school for another tremendous D C trip. Much to my wife's disappointment, my son told us he did not wanna come home, so. All the feedback I got was really positive, so, you know, great job to those guys and the chaperones.
Um, I just wanna wish, good, there's a lot of good lucks that need to happen. Um, there's the science fair on Thursday at the elementary school, so good luck to all the fourth and fifth graders participating in the science fair. Um, to all of the kids participating in the M E T G festival this weekend for theater, good luck to them as well. And to the band students who will be competing at Great East on Friday, good luck to them as well. It's a lot.
So I was gonna say good luck, so good luck to everyone, as you just mentioned. One thing I wanna say, um, the presentation was good, the conversation at the end was great. The kids were there, they were comfortable, they were engaged, um, the maturity level, I just, I was really impressed by how confident and comfortable they were and how they carried themselves and I, I was really impressed by that group tonight. And, um, I, I generally don't say that was, I was taken with that, that was great, so, uh, kudos to them, good mature group and I think they had a lot of timely, insightful information that we can actually, uh, act, act on with the next month or so, so, thanks to that group, that was great.
Agreed, and again, I'll echo the thank you to, uh, Mr. Ogden and the freshmen who came in and presented this evening and good luck to everyone. We do have a need for executive session this evening to conduct the strategy, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And we will come out of executive session only to
Adhere to the regular.
Adhere to the regular session meeting. And we do need a roll call vote. Well, make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Awesome, thank you and have a good night.